Are we, are other commissioners joining us via Zoom? Not joining us?
Commissioner Freitas is not joining us tonight, and I think Commissioner Lazar will be, but...
Okay. Are we doing this formally? Need to bring it to order and just do a roll call? Okay. All right, we will bring this special planning commission study session to order. How about a roll call?
Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Commissioner Kraft?
Present.
Commissioner Lazar? Commissioner Freitas? Commissioner Mayer?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, take it away.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for, um, commissioners, for coming to the special meeting to talk specifically about this Gulches and Greenways planning effort. Oh, let me share my screen first. Okay. Um, so just to start, um, Gulch Greenway is a valley or ravine varying in size and topography and the vegetated areas within and adjacent to it. And they contain wetlands and watercourses. Here's a watershed map of the Eureka area. The purple line is the watershed boundary, and there's three gulches at the northern end of Eureka that drain north to Eureka Slough, which drains to Humboldt Bay. And the third one is Myrtle Town Gulch, and that's actually outside of the city, so it's not implicated by the planning effort. And then on the southern end of the city, there's the Gulches of Martin Slough that flow south to Martin Slough, which drains into Swain Slough, and that drains into Elk River, which eventually drains into Humboldt Bay, southwest of the city. So this planning effort is focused on the portions of those as a black dotted line and outside of the coastal zone, which is shown in blue on the map. So we're talking about Cooper Gulch, Second or McFarland Gulch, and portions of the Gulches of Martin Slough. Zooming in, the coastal zone boundary at the northern end of the city or the northeastern end of the city is... And Cooper Gulch starts south of Seventh Street. It includes Cooper Gulch Park. Fourteenth Street crosses it. Del Norte Street as well. And it ends, yeah, Eureka High School includes Ball Field in it, and then it ends south of Boone Street. Second Gulch, again, the coastal zone boundary is Myrtle Avenue, and it's just, it's inside of the city limit here, which is Harrison Avenue. And it includes some of Zane's Fields, and Boone Street crosses through it, and St. Joseph's is right adjacent to it, and it ends south of Harris Street. And then the Gulches of Martin Slough generally start south of Harris Street and include Sequoia Park and Zoo and the Eureka Golf Course. So the goal of this planning effort, what it stems from is in our 2040 general plan, there's a policy NR 2.2 to prepare and adopt Gulch Greenway preservation and management guidelines. Our general plan EIR relied in part on that policy and other resource protection policies to find no significant impact of planned growth on wildlife movement, riparian habitat, sensitive species, and biological resources. So the focus of this effort is to map and define the boundaries of a Gulch Greenway management area and draft a Gulch Greenway ordinance to have standards and additional, additional standards and development review in that area. And then going back, this planning effort has a long history. Policy NR 2.2 is actually implementation program 6.5 in our old 1996 general plan. And there was, that, that was supposed to be implemented originally in fiscal year 97 to 98. So this has, ordinance has been contemplated for a long time, and there was a really robust planning effort in 2003 through about 2009 with a lot of public outreach on developing an ordinance, but it never, ultimately, it never went to city council. As a result, our current inland zoning code doesn't include any standards that protect wetland streams and riparian habitat other than archery removal standards, and there's no limitation on development on steep slopes. And so why is it important to adopt local standards? Here's a general map of the Gulch Greenway areas that was included in our general plan, and it shows that over 75% of the land in these areas is privately owned. And this map shows that the vast majority of the land is also zoned residential and mostly single-family residential. So in the R1, development of residences is allowed just with a building permit, and it's allowed by right if you're consistent with the objective code standards. And because there's no discretionary review, there's no sequoia review. So currently, the city has no regulatory tool for preventing further fragmentation of the Gulch Greenway areas because there's no discretionary review and there's no objective standards for ministerial review. So returning to our general plan, which is our guiding city document, it has a lot of policies that call for protection of these areas, for their value, for instance, for wildlife movement and for floodplain capacity. And then there's also a bunch of policies about establishing a publicly accessible trail network in and along Eureka Gulches and Greenways. And then in our housing element, the, one of the main strategies is maximizing housing potential on the few remaining vacant and underutilized sites in the city. So in drafting the ordinance, we have to think about striking a balance where we protect the values and functions of the Gulches and Greenways, but also don't unnecessarily restrict housing development in doing it. So here's a timeline of the planning effort. It started with an online survey that was open from mid-January to mid-April. And then we had a public workshop on March 29 via Zoom, where there was a presentation and some polling exercises and a question and answer session. Planning staff went to our Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission with the draft ordinance April 28 and May 26. And then here we are at our study session with the planning commission on May 31. We're tentatively thinking that it'll come to the planning commission for a hearing in July at your regularly scheduled meeting. And the planning commission's role is providing a recommendation to city council. And then the earliest it would go to city council would be in August, where they would be the ultimate decision makers on adopting the ordinance. And so just, I want to just give a brief recap of some of the key takeaways from our public outreach to date. First of all, the public workshop on March 29, we had 68 members of the public in attendance. And the video is available on the city's YouTube channel if anybody didn't get to see it. With the polling, one of the things we asked was for the audience members to name something they value about the city's Gulches and Greenways. And this was the word cloud that was generated from their responses. And as you can see, people really care about the Gulch Greenways' value as for wildlife habitat. We also asked them to envision the future of the Gulch Greenways in an ideal future. What would they like to see? And the top answer, or the top response was trails and then native plants. And there were responses about habitat protection and restoration. Moving on to the public survey, we got 554 survey responses. 225 of those, 41% came from people who live and or own property on Gulch Greenways within the city of Eureka, because we sent a postcard to all of the property owners that are in the Gulch Greenway areas. That's why we got such a large response from them. And the summary and full results of the survey are available on the city website, and I included the summary in your agenda packet. The first question we asked was for people to, we gave a list of benefits provided by the Gulch Greenways, and we asked people which they found most valuable. And these are the top three responses: fish and wildlife habitat and passage value, scenic character, and natural vegetation. A later question asked about what we should include in standards for the Gulches and Greenways, and there was a list of options. And the most popular choices mirror that first question. They're about, they want protection and enhancement of fish and wildlife habitat and movement corridors, protection of natural and scenic character, and minimization of fragmentation of... And if you, if filtering the results for people that just live or own property on and adjacent to the Gulch Greenways, it's the same order of choices. We also asked what hazards and risks people found the most concerning. And by far, legal dumping and encampments was the most concerning. But maybe I can just, there we go. Fragmentation and law-studied encroachment of development was number two, which is important to note, most popular. And looking at the write-in responses, which there was a lot of, there was three general themes that just kept coming up again and again. And one was, a lot of people talked about trails either in complete support or in opposition or wanting specific standards around trail development to protect wildlife or private property. And we will definitely pass all that information along to our city staff who work on trail planning. There's also a lot of concern about encampments. And clearly, Eureka has a homelessness crisis. This ordinance is not going to address that, but we will definitely let the city council know that this is a priority for people. And then protecting the Gulches and Greenways from further fragmentation was also, we heard again and again, even when filtering the responses for people that live for own property in the area. One thing we asked is, can you think of any uses or development that should not be allowed in the city's Gulch Greenways? And the most popular response was no development, no buildings, no houses. Should we provide exceptions to standards to allow housing development? That was one of the options people could select for things to include in the ordinance. And that was ranked last. Only 6% of respondents agreed with having exceptions to standards for more housing development. We asked, can we allow, should we allow maintenance of existing development and uses? That was more popular. And we also asked about minor additions to existing development, and 10% of people were in support of that. So people were really protective of the Gulch Greenways. We also have referred out the draft ordinance to the tribes and the relevant resource agencies, and that led to a site visit with California Department of Fish and Wildlife staff in April, where we went to a bunch of different Gulch Greenway areas around the city. And one big takeaway from that was that they reiterated how important the Gulch slopes, the upland areas above the streams and wetlands, they're really important to the health of the streams and wetlands. And so for them, it's important that all the land below the break-in slope is protected, even upland vegetation on, on the slopes because it shades the streams. So taking into consideration all of that information and looking at other cities and counties ordinances, we've drafted an ordinance and a draft mapping methodology that was included in your packet. And our intent with it was to require additional scrutiny of development in these undeveloped vegetated Gulch areas to minimize and mitigate impacts and map and define the area conservatively, but allow a process for reducing the area by demonstrating what you want to do, won't degrade the habitat, trying to create simpler review processes for more minor projects, and exempting work in existing developed areas that doesn't encroach further, and exempting positive work like restoration and invasive vegetation removal. So the draft ordinance, as we mentioned, has additional standards and review for development occurring in Gulch Greenway management areas. And it includes a textual definition of this Gulch Greenway management area, or GGMA, which includes 20% slopes or greater. So it's hard to see on this map because the blue contour lines are kind of in the way, but it's the areas that are in yellow, orange, and red are the steeper slopes. Streams and associated floodplains, so the FEMA-mapped floodplain and wetlands. This is just the National Wetland Inventory Wetland Mapping, and then 100-foot, or 50 to 100-foot setback area adjacent to streams and wetlands. So if you meet any of those criteria, you're in the GGMA. And then just a note on the setbacks. In Eureka, the stream and wetland setbacks aren't always defining the outer boundary of the GGMA. It's often defined by the steep slopes because we, we have some really small streams at the bottom of our gulches, and you go 100 feet beyond that. It's not that, there's still a ton of slope above that, so it's often the steep slope that's going to define the outer boundary. And the idea of the setback is not to stop development, but just to trigger analysis of what would be an adequate setback. Because it's really development and site-specific, what, what setback you need from a wetland or stream to protect the value of that habitat. And we added something in the draft ordinance that allows ministerial projects to get a reduced setback through a ministerial process where we go out in the field with CDFW staff. And if we all agree, we could just reduce the setback ministerially. That's something that's in that draft ordinance to hopefully not overburden smaller ministerial projects. And the ordinance, so it applies within the Gulch Greenway management area, and it applies to anything that already requires a city permit under the Building Code, Zoning Code, or subdivision regulations in addition to removal of native, native woody riparian plants and work in wetlands and streams. Although there's a bunch of exemptions that are built in for certain things, like maintenance or replacement of existing maintained outdoor areas would be exempt from the ordinance, how it's written now. Same with trash and invasive vegetation removal. That's consistent with the standards of the ordinance. And in areas that are just setback areas, and they aren't areas of streams, wetlands, or steep slopes, vegetation maintenance and the addition of 120 square feet of impervious surface is exempt in the draft ordinance. And then there's development and uses that are allowed with a zoning clearance. For instance, work on existing structures. And what that means is when they come in for the building permit for what work they're doing, planning reviews what they're doing for consistency with the ordinance, there's no additional cost. And then certain things are allowed just with, with a minor use permit. So this is a discretionary process in, for example, subdivisions. And it doesn't allow for new buildings in the GGMA unless that would prohibit development of a parcel for its principal use. Standards, there's also a bunch of standards in the ordinance for all development and uses. For example, avoiding damage to structural roots of native trees. There's standards for temporary uses. And then there, when there's a permanent conversion, it says they need to look at alternatives, and they need to mitigate. And so in addition to having the textual definition, we'd like to have a map of the area. And if you look at a map of the city, for instance, if you look at our LiDAR, the Gulch Greenway Management Area seems obvious. It's where there's the slopes. And then if you look at an aerial image of the city, it seems obvious, too. It's where there's vegetation. But when you zoom in, it gets more complicated about how do you map the outer boundary of the area and what gets included and excluded from the map. Thinking about the textual definition, we can easily map the 500-year floodplain. We have that map. We can easily map steep slopes. We have great LiDAR for the city. But we can't identify and map all wetlands and watercourses. That would take going on every private property and doing a wetland delineation, which is just not feasible. So we can't precisely map the textual definition. So our thought was, in addition to mapping the floodplain and the steep slopes, we would include land above the steep slopes to the edge of unmaintained vegetation, not to exceed 100 feet, so that if there was, I don't know, a wetland right below the top of slope, we'd be sure to be mapping everything that might be included in the textual definition, and then land below the steep slopes. But it gets complicated when there's developed areas below the top of slope that are outside of the floodplain, whether to include those in the map, and whether to include houses that are on slopes or not include them. And thinking about what our goal is, it's that any new encroachment into undeveloped Gulch, Gulches receives scrutiny. So something to think about in our mapping. And how the ordinance is written now is that the textual definition is controlling. So if the mapped land doesn't meet that, the director, which means city staff, can remove those areas from the map and adjust it to be consistent with the textual definition based on information that is supplied to the city. Yeah, so that concludes my presentation. And interested in comments and questions and thoughts. Thank you.
I will open it up to commissioners for questions for staff.
All right, I guess I'll start. I have a lot of questions and a lot of comments. I also want to hear from, from the general public who's come today as well and, you know, and have some additional discussion among, among the commissioners. You know, first of all, I just want to thank you for resurrecting this effort, you know, to forward this Greenways and Gulches ordinance, you know, for city council consideration. I've provided you with some comments during the, during the March and April as a, as just a private citizen who lives on the Gulches. And I had six general comments and four really specific comments. And, and what I'm seeing is in tonight's presentation is a number of those comments are addressed, which I'm delighted to see. But I guess here's my, my two general comments that I want to put out before I stop and hear other commissioners. I'll probably speak again. I think it's really important that the, that this ordinance frame what can be done in Eureka's Greenways and Gulches, and not just what cannot be done. I think that's a really important piece. If it reads too protectionist, I don't think it'll get enough support, you know, to pass. And, and there's an acknowledgement already in it that there's so many ordinances, Fish and Game, Regional Water Quality Control Board, FEMA Floodplain. There's a number of, of non-city jurisdictional areas that exist within the Greenways and Gulches. And up till, up to date, those are only called upon for specific developments. It's, it's not that, you know, those agencies are, are watching closely Eureka's Greenways and Gulches. So it's important that we, you know, that we, that we have one. I think it's also really important that we provide a nexus with the state and federal agency riparian and wetland requirements. And you seem to have done that. And when I look at the USA's 404 permit, the CDFW 1600 Stream Bed Alteration Agreements, when I look at 401 Water Quality Certifications and, and some of the Threat and Endangered, you know, language, what I see in this draft is, is really consistent with that. And the setbacks, the differential setback of 50 to 100 feet, and as, as well as slopes, is really consistent with language that I see in other documents. So I, you know, I know you didn't pull it out of thin air, that it's, that it's reasoned and that it's foundational in other documents. So, so, you know, that's one thing is, is just to make sure that it's, that it says what can be done. I think that's an important message in terms of what's possible in the Greenways and Gulches, rather than, I know there's a lot of public support for preservation. Those came out really high. But these, it is 75% private property, and it's, it can't be seen as a takings issue. That would be, I think, a mistake. And then the ordinance also, my recommendation is that the ordinance be, be broken into two parts. And, and, and part one is what you're doing right here, that there be, that it outlines the mandatory steps and the processes when you kind of hit that nexus for development within those areas that could be too steep or could be, have wetland delineation or be in the, up, within the riparian zone or out to the outer drip line of the riparian zone. But, you know, and that's, and that's, that's what I'm seeing in this. What, what I don't see is part two. And to me, this is really for the public and for the people who live on the Greenways and Gulches. And I've seen it with the city of Oakland. I've seen it with the city of San Jose and Santa Clara, that there's also a guide to living on the Greenways and Gulches that, that provides a number of guidances that are non-mandatory, that are absolutely voluntary, that, that support healthy Greenways and Gulches and the ecosystem services, and also give landowners some ideas about, about what they may want to consider. It's, Redwood Community Action Agency, decades ago, put out, when you live by a stream in Eureka, they have a little 20-page blue booklet. I don't know if you've seen it. And it just gives landowners a heads up, hey, you live by a stream. It's, it's a little different than living by any other natural, you know, natural amenity. And these are some things that you should think about. And, and what you see in, in the city of Oakland, San Jose, Santa Clara, et cetera,[1702.91] And what you see in the city of Oakland, San Jose, Santa Clara, et cetera, is recommendations of landscaping species that won't be invasive. Lots of recommendations about what to do with your green waste and not just throwing your, you know, ivy that you pull right back, you know, over the steep slope and it gets into the stream and spreads down the gulches, you know, downlighting for, downlighting around the houses on the greenway edge, you know, so that it doesn't create a lot of light pollution. So just considerations about light pollution and noise pollution. And that's, and that would be helpful, I think, for the people in Eureka to not only have this ordinance that says what can and can't be done, but also just some general guidelines about what to do when you live near a greenway and gulch and some things that you might want to consider, just for public education. I'll stop there, I'll come back later with more.
I guess I just want to confirm a few things. So, with the exception of wetlands, the setback for watercourses is 100 feet always, right? It's just you have the slope way and you have the 100 feet from the riparian drip line. But it doesn't seem to differentiate between seasonal and perennial. I'll look at that, I think it's the definition section, it would be page two of the ordinance.
You're right. It doesn't.
All right, just checking.
Our streams are mostly, I think, all perennial, but, you know, there might be unmapped ones that aren't.
Yeah, or side channels or something like that. In ex parte, I guess I did speak with Michael Van Haddam today just because I didn't see any comments in the, plugged into that. And he largely parroted what you were saying about the idea of extending the area of protection to the top of a canyon, say, instead of just pushing it out 100 feet from a break-in slope, but considering the break-in slope at the top, not just the mid-slope kinds of breaks that can occur, which would be dramatic in terms of increasing the net that gets cast on the protections. I was a little confused in the ordinance structure in the way that it sets up the use permit process and then sets up the, kind of a secondary process for, what do they call it? Setback or permanent conversion, is that? So I see under section H2, it's going to be page four and five, you got the use permit to allow for certain activities within the GGMA, including subdivisions. And then also where it would provide, it's kind of a takings carve-out in part I, it looked like, where it preclude development of a parcel from residential development. But then you have this section on permanent conversion of wetland stream and riparian areas on page seven, part, it's like section J. Can you talk a little bit about that and how you envision that kind of being utilized?
Yeah, so for instance, if there was a taking situation and you had to develop a house in the Gulch Greenway Management Area, then these are standards that you'd have to comply with. And so the standards are that your project must be the least environmentally damaging feasible alternative and that you provide feasible measures to adequately mitigate adverse environmental effects. And then it gives a bunch of examples of things you could do.
Okay, so just to take a crack at synthesizing that, so it sounds like the only time we would be entertaining development in a greenway, a GGMA, would be if it was the first development. I mean, there are provisions for non-conformities and minor additions and things like that, but if it was a new development proposal for a new unit, it would be because there's no way to comply with the prescriptive standards of the ordinance and they would need to reduce it in order to entertain a development project. And then you would use these standards and BMPs essentially as part of the review process.
Yeah, I first see, people first trying to get the setback reduction to get themselves out of the GGMA. And then if they can't completely get themselves out of the GGMA, then they would have to...
I see. Well, that goes into my next question. So I find it somewhat mystifying, and I could be, this just could be me, but, so let me just first confirm. It seems like when it comes to the setback reduction provisions, there is a distinction made, it references section 155.408, the permitting procedure section of zoning regulation. It talks about how the reduction could be a ministerial process, but if it was accompanying an otherwise discretionary activity. That does different, that is different than the standard, than the approach done in the county. You could have a ministerial project, but by needing to reduce a setback, you would be triggering discretionary review. So I think that, I want to make sure I understand that right. Like if you had a building permit and you just wanted to reduce the setback in concert with your building, that could all be done at the department level.
Yeah, I actually stole that from the county ordinance. It has a provision that you could go out in the field and if agreed upon.
Yes, with CDFW endorsement, yeah. That is a sort of lower level. And I'm supportive, and I did speak with CDFW about that, whether they were willing to engage, you know, because you can imagine it could be an unfunded mandate, that might be difficult. But they are, their offices are on Second Street and I think they are generally interested in early consultation wherever possible. So, okay, so I think I got, that helps me clarify that. I guess there were a few other things here and there, I guess I'll just say, I don't need to answer or anything, but I think, provided this gets adopted, the concept of an existing development is referenced in the ordinance, I think you need to create a deadline for what constitutes existing. I didn't see that anywhere. I think to the extent that you have restoration activities within one of these areas, those are clearly something we'd want to give a little, very little scrutiny to. Also, trash cleanup, I see it in there, but make sure that we're covered for any kind of, you know, abatement or cleanup efforts that are associated with encampments or things like that, you know, just to cover the range of activities that might occur. I think that we don't need this sub scrutiny. We don't want to get it caught, you know. And then I think maintenance, under the context of the ordinance, would be a good thing to And you referenced in the setback area discussion, recent aerial photography, I would also include satellite imagery in that definition, that's just so that you can use whatever works. And, oh, one last thing, it seems like with wetland definition, it relies on a three parameter Or was that too coarse a way to put it?
It's, it's the, it was an attempt to use the regional board's definition of what a wetland is. They, they, certain things are not wetlands to them that meet the parameters, like if it's, if it was created for the purposes of stormwater management and things like that. But their whole definition is super long, so I just basically said it has to meet those three parameters plus the state. Let's find it.
Part 17.
Yeah, so it needs to meet all three parameters and the regional board's definition of waters of the state, how it's written now.
So if somebody comes into the office and they're looking at the national wetland inventory layer, the first thing would be to say, well, if you want to differentiate, you're going to need to hire someone to do a delineation or something along those lines?
Yeah, I don't think you can rely on the national wetland inventory to determine where wetlands are.
That's very, very conservative, as far as the way it's mapped. It includes a lot that might not meet that test. Okay, I think that's good for now for me. I'd be interested in hearing from the public and other commissioners.
I have a pretty basic question. So three quarters of this is private property, one quarter is public. What percentage overall of these, what would be within the mapped areas, the GGMA's, are already developed? How much are we talking about putting restrictions on? And plus or minus 10% is okay for my question?
Okay, so out of the 1,100 parcels, how many are completely undeveloped at this time? That is a good question. It's tricky because a lot of people that own property in this area, they have two APNs, but one legal parcel, because they get taxed less on the portion of their parcel that is steeply sloped and not developable. So it's hard for us to figure out whether it's a vacant parcel or it's just a vacant portion of a larger legal parcel. But I could get some estimates and report back to you guys at your next meeting.
I would appreciate that. And like I said, a rough estimate is okay as far as I'm concerned. I do think, clearly the survey participants were very interested in protection. This is a classic situation, as we go down the road, we're going to have two good things butting up against each other, housing and protection of the riparian areas and streams and gulches. So it would be helpful to me to understand, you know, to put it fairly bluntly, how much developable housing are we making harder or taking off the table by doing this?
Kristin's been, Kristin Getz has been looking at all of our undeveloped parcels to figure out housing element numbers, so she can help me hopefully with that, because we've been looking closely at where we can get more housing.
All right, I appreciate it.
She's not prepared to answer that now. Not even within his, okay, great, great.
Yeah, I just want to follow up with a couple of other things. You know, clearly, I agree with Commissioner Lazar, you know, the ordinance, you know, really needs, you know, some kind of a clear grandfather clause that makes it, spells it out in plain language, that permits the existing development that's already encroached into the riparian corridor and/or wetlands, that there's no sort of punishment for having developed in there. And that all, everything that's built is grandfathered in and Commissioner Lazar, you know, said maybe even developing a date as a baseline, you know, things up to this date are grandfathered in. And I'm not sure what the, you know, I don't have any recommendations for what year that ought to be, but it should be something recent, very, very, very recent, if not the date that this thing passes. I also think that the wetland delineation methodology, you know, the three parameter US Army Corps methodology is sound and that the one, you know, the one parameter, US Fish and Wildlife parameter in the greenways and gulches, doesn't always get there. You know, I've walked the greenways and gulches of Eureka over a 10-year period to, when I was working for, when I was a commissioner of open space parks and recreation, and this was in development. We were, I was part of the greenways and gulches committee, so we were getting to know the greenways and gulches in some detail. And one thing that I noticed often on the greenway and gulch on my property and on others is, is, you know, that there's a tremendous amount of springs coming out of the side slopes. So this 20% grade, the wetland delineation goes beyond the riparian, sorry, goes beyond the active stream courses and even the ephemeral stream courses and even includes what would be delineated wetlands, even on slopes where people don't expect to be wetlands because the amount of seeps that are coming out and it makes it really, really unstable. And just, you know, in general, I think this differential setback is important because if I was to characterize the greenways and gulches in the headwaters, they're very, typically very V-shaped, very steep, they've got a single string channel at the bottom. And so the slope is really important, or 100-foot setback makes sense if you're going from the center line of the stream, which is kind of the typical methodology up either way. But as you get further into the mid-reaches, the valley starts to widen out a little bit. Kind of the mid-reaches are more like this, the slopes are a little less steep, and there's often in flood times, there's often a single string channel, but there's also two or sometimes two or three other channels that are active during floods. And you can see those depressional, sinuous channels that may just be filled with vegetation at, during the non-rainy season, but, you know, during the peak are really these anabranching, anastomosing channels, or sometimes like when someone braids their hair, a braided channel system, it's not a single string. And then as you get down closer to the bay, the slopes get less and less steep, but the wetland area, the active channel and active floodplain is extremely wide and has multiple channels. And so it wouldn't be appropriate to say, to go 100 foot from the center line of the channel, because some of those wetland bogs are 200 feet wide when you get closer to the bay. And so really, I think you're looking at 100 feet from the top of bank or to the outer drip line of the riparian canopy, whichever comes first. And then that 20% slope, you know, adds into it. And that's, you know, that's already consistent with the grading ordinance, says, you know, no grading on more than 20%, slope. So I think you're consistent there, but what I'm suggesting is that, you know, looking is saying, going from the top of bank, 100 feet from the top of bank is more realistic than going from the center line of the channel, because the channels, as I said, become, you get into a multi-string channel system when you get closer to the bay. Other comment is, I think I dressed most of it. I think the other thing that I'd like to see in the ordinance is just a real clear nexus with the grading ordinance permit, with the stormwater watercourse protection code, that's 54052, the flood hazard area and regulations, that's chapter 154 of the code, the heritage tree ordinance, which was passed earlier, or early last year, and tree removal permit and health and sanitation weeds, rubbish and debris, chapter 94 of the general plan. And so, you know, just so that people understand that this ordinance correlates with these other ordinances and that for more information they can, it's just informational for the public. If you want to know more and see what the correlation is with other ordinances, you know, at least that we name them. And then the same thing with the state and federal, you know, riparian and wetland requirements. So that USA's 404 permit and the 1600 stream bed alteration agreement and the 401 water quality certification, just that the public who's viewing this ordinance knows that it's tied, that we're not just making this stuff up. You know, that it's really stuff that people would have to do if on a, it may not have been ministerial in the past, it's sort of complaint-driven in the past, someone sees something happening and they call Fish and Game, or they call the regional board and then suddenly there's scrutiny on it, but it's not necessarily immediately apparent to people who may want to be developing. And so that might be helpful in the ordinance, just to lay that out a little bit.
Madam Chair, we've had a comment that we're hard to hear this evening, so if I could remind everybody, please to get close to their microphones and stay close.
Thank you for the reminder.
So here's, I'll leave it with a question. In delineating, what are the greenways and gulches? And I get the, you know, I get that this is a little difficult to say what is it. And I know it looks obvious in air photo maps. I'm also curious about drainage ways that may not be vegetated, may not be obvious, that are more ephemeral streams. I think that you're correct hydrologically, that most of the greenways and gulches are, do have perennial flow, even though it may come down to a drip. But it's those areas higher up on the slope that for which there's stormwater conveyance that may not look like a channel in particular, or may be, or may even be a human-made channel to help drainage into the greenways and gulches. You might want to look at some of those small tributaries or engineered features that act like tributaries as well. Or I'm wondering how you're going to deal with those. And I know that that's a lot of, what I'm hearing in this effort is that all the details on the ground will be subject to closer review based on this ordinance, putting it on the table, that this looks like it could be above a 20% slope, or it does look like you're within this 100-foot buffer, and then it will start that sort of deeper level of investigation. So maybe you don't have to do it upfront, but that just seems one of those tricky areas. What do you call a human-made conveyance versus a natural ecosystem conveyance for, you know, a sort of natural water course versus an engineered water course and how you're going to pull those into this ordinance as well? That's all I have for the moment.
It's just, on that point, the county ordinance does have a, distinguishes, it's something that consists entirely of a drainage device or other human-made feature, similar human-made feature, that might be something that could be used to provide that distinction. I guess one other question I had in response to, and I thought of it, I forgot of it, but Commissioner Kraft reminded me, in cases where people are going to be losing development potential, has there been any thought given to density bonuses or things where you have this transfer of development rights as a consequence of the loss of opportunity in the areas that are subject to the restrictions? Because I think that might be a good opportunity. It may not be easy to do on the same parcel as the, what's been, what's losing the development, but has there been any discussion of that or consideration of that?
No. So are you thinking about a transfer development on the same parcel, like to allow them to build higher and with less setbacks? Like to allow them to build higher and with less setbacks in their developable area?
Potentially, you know, the higher densities, maybe subdivision potential where it otherwise wouldn't exist, smaller parcel sizes.
We have a conservation subdivision that'll, would allow for, um. Exceptions to parcel sizes for subdivisions in these areas and in different configurations, but not. That wouldn't help somebody who wants, who doesn't want to subdivide, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Cause isn't it, wouldn't the concert, I guess I've always thought of conservation subdivisions as like subdivision of. Of a vacant portion of a property for a conservation purpose. Where it wouldn't otherwise comply with maybe zoning requirements.
If you have a big parcel or set of group of parcels and you, um. You can apply for a subdivision, a conservation subdivision where you are conserving. Over 50, 50% or more of the land, um, and then the rest of it, you're develop, you're. You're turning into developable parcels and it allows you to, um. Do things. Uh, to not meet all the development standards with those parcels so that you can configure them to allow for that. Big develop, I mean, the big area of conservation.
So this is within the city code already or subdivision?
It's, it's in our inland code in the section on. Special types of subdivisions. What are, what's that section called Kristen? Where we have the SB nine subdivision and the conservation subdivision and the small lot subdivision. I'm forgetting what its name is, it's.
Okay, so the concept at least as far as waiving certain requirements and incentivizing. Conservation of constrained lands. Exists to some.
Yeah, it was added within the code update, I don't believe anybody's come in for a conservation subdivision since that, since 2019 when we added it. But it's there now.
I'd, I'd like to add that it might be really good to put that somehow in this ordinance or, or, or if it's not in the ordinance, it's in that landowner's guide that I was also. Thinking of, of how to create a conservation easement or, or how to get lower taxes if. On parts of your property that under this ordinance wouldn't be developable. And that would be really helpful because I've tried to do that on, on our land and we have, you know, three and a half acres that are. In, we've done variable density thinning for merchantable timber and it's in, it's in forestry use, although we are taxed as a residential property. And I've gone to the county to, to try to file a conservation easement and they've said, we're not receiving those at this point. And I've gotten pretty much closed doors on, on that, so I'd, as a landowner in there, I'd like to know more about it and it might be something valuable to put in the user's guide. If there were such a document, that's a supplement to the ordinance.
Thank you commissioners for. I appreciate when your areas of expertise really come into play, so good job there. It looks like, um, now it'd be a time to open it up to the public and we'll start with people in the audience here. Do we need to stick by the three minutes, is that a recommendation from?
That's up to the commission.
We could. Yeah, I don't know how you guys feel if you want to have more of a. Opportunity for questions of people that have.
It's a study session, so I'd, I'd be willing to in, in, increase it from three minutes to, you know, to five at max. I like that.
Yeah, it sounds good just to keep us on track to try to end on time, so, yeah, great, thank you. So we will encourage you to try to stick to five minutes and. Um, if you have questions where I think the council, the commission is willing to, uh, answer those as well. So anyone who'd like to speak, come on up, state your name.
Uh, thank you, Dennis McBride, 1230 Leslie Road, Eureka, California. That property that I, at 1230 Leslie is, uh, uh, immediately adjacent to. The proposed, uh, uh, gulch and greenway and I have some concerns, I testified to the. Parks and Recreation Commission to the same effect that. Uh, the implementation of the ordinance would have a, uh, an effect on the property value and I had suggested. That, uh, it may be appropriate to do a fiscal analysis of the, that impact and. So that information is available to the council when they might consider, uh, this, this proposal. And the reason that I'm concerned about that is, you know, if, uh, uh. If I were looking for a, a piece of property and I, uh, became aware of the fact that some of the normal. Functions that I could do in my property, clearing brush, putting up a fence, some of these minor items that I could do without having to go through any process. If I found that I had to, uh, submit for a discretionary permit that would, which may or may not be granted. I probably wouldn't make an offer in that property, I'd probably continue to look to other locations. So conversely, as a property owner, that kind of limits my market somewhat in my mind and it may not be a substantial, uh, impact. But it might be 5% or 10% and today's market, that's not an unsubstantial amount, you know, it could be. $10,000, $50,000. And mine is just one parcel, mine is already developed, you know, with the exception that was, uh, uh, discussed would probably apply to most of it, but. Uh, there is a portion that would fall within the 20% and there's portions that does, uh. Not riparian, but, uh, uh, does have native, uh, woodland on it, but, uh. Uh, at any rate, um. Mine is just one of the, uh, apparently 800, uh, private parcels. And I would think that the cumulative, uh, impact of all, all of these, uh, properties being affected could be substantial. And to that end, I would, uh, once again suggest that, uh, an analysis be done and so that everyone can, uh, see what the impact is and that it's, uh. It's transparent, um, I know I would certainly appreciate that. And, uh. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I want to take my mask off, it's easier to communicate when you see the whole face. Uh, I'm Bill Barnum, I'm here tonight on behalf of, uh. My parents, Bob and Pat Barnum. And their longtime partner, uh, in real estate in Eureka, Fred Lumblade. I, uh, have had an opportunity to read the draft ordinance, look at the initial map. I've spoken with Kristen and we've agreed, we're going to go out in the woods and walk around and look for the development potential that's there. So I want to use my time to give you a bit of a history, uh, of the properties out there. Uh, in 1955, my father was 28 years old and he along with Fred Lumblade Senior, who's in heaven. Uh, partnered on buying 320 acres between Campden Road and what we know as the Elks Lodge. That included, uh, their gift in 1959 of the north nine holes of the golf course. And in 1960, the south nine holes. Uh, other divisions between the Lumblades and the Barnums produced the, uh, large lot subdivision towards the Campden Road. There are a number of nice homes and large parcels there with Martin Slew running through it. And my parents have a 43 acre parcel with their home. And joining to the south, we have a 22 acre parcel with Fred Lumblade. Then further south is Lombard Hills on the plateau, we have an approved map for about 58 lots that is not. Not yet developed and then south of that, we have a 33 acre parcel. Um, access through Boyle Drive on Lombard Hills. So what I'm proposing is that Kristen and I can go out and walk these areas. The FEMA flood map shows that the vast majority of those parcels is developable. But she and I can talk about what our long-term plans are. My dad's 94 and a half, mom will be 91 on election day. I will be 68 on election day, I was born on her 23rd birthday. So as you can see, absorption rates in Eureka are 60 year cycles, it gets very slow. Uh, so we're not opposed to the concept of a gulch greenway ordinance, we just want to make sure that what we do is consistent with what. Remnant development opportunities exist on those three tracks. Rather than talk more, I perhaps could answer any questions that you have.
Uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Barnum, I do have one question, um. Of all that you described, is all of that within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are you seeing, um, this greenway and gulch ordinance, if it were to come to pass, uh. Severely limiting development potential that, that you, that your family has already envisioned or, or would it be a minimum impact?
Well, I think I'll learn something when Kristen and I go out and walk, um. The, the entire area that is, uh, owned by these two families, including the old golf course area historically. Was the original Valley of the Giants. Uh, so when I was five years old, there were 10, 12, 14 foot diameter redwood stumps all through that valley. Uh, in the 1800s, of course, after the old growth was removed, uh, the policy, uh, was to burn. And to remove the redwoods and, um, and create pastures. So in the 1950s, the area of the golf course was the capital dairy. So. Human impacts out there have been tremendous and, um, the last 70 years, uh. Well, you know, the order of, of development, the original proposal for the plateau where Lombard Hills is today was to create College of the Redwoods at that site. But other folks in the community came up with the Beatrice site because I guess they like being near a good earthquake fault. And, uh, so we were delayed with that, then we had a reading contract to propose a subdivision. And they entered into contract for it and, uh, signed the contract and went bankrupt. So we built the original 72 lot subdivision on his plan. And now about 220 homes there, uh, over 57 years, about four a year. So the absorption rate is just glacial, uh, which is why we haven't built the new 58 unit, uh, map, well, even at that, we may phase it. So down in my parents' area, about 43 acres we have in mind. And I'll show you probably something on the order of single digit number of parcels. My, my parents have a beautiful home there with great landscaping, we don't want to, you know, create a two acre parcel with, uh, a bunch of tract homes around it, it just. It would be aesthetically a disaster. And then the 22 acre parcel, um, who knows what the future holds? It may be because of the topography there, we may be able to do with a zone change, maybe some, uh, multifamily in there, maybe townhomes or something. Rather than, uh, do something on like Lombard Hills. Topographically, that valley interestingly is higher than the Morgan Creek Estates project, which is north of Campden Road. Isn't that interesting? So, um. Uh, I, I've talked to some of the city staff about what we can do with traffic down there at the bottom of the hill by Fairway Drive. Uh, to accommodate access into that 22 acres. So those things, I can imagine this is a good 20 to 30 year project in the future. The 38, 33 acre parcel to the south, uh, would likely end up with a, a, a single digit number of, of, of uses. Nine or fewer, I would imagine, same sort of thing, forest hillside type thing, maybe a conservation subdivision, okay? Anything else?
I remember voting not that long ago on the extension of the, the later phase. Has the development agreement been signed for? For that?
No, no, um. The city attorney and our council are, are working on that, I assume we'll get that by the fall, we have till February. To get that wrapped up.
Yeah, that, that is correct, we received a draft, uh, development agreement from, um. From the applicant and we're rooting it through the necessary departments right now and our city attorneys looking at. But we are actively working on it because we know that that February deadline, even though it seems far away, will happen quicker than we expect. And it'll come to planning commission first and then city council acts on it.
And that would provide a means to insulate the project from the ramifications of what we're discussing tonight, at least of that project.
Well, I think that project up on the plateau would not be affected by it.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, it seems like just the northeast corner would be the closest that.
Yeah, that northeast corner, uh, is quite steep and in our, in our approved plan, none of that would be developed.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Okay, thanks.
I just want to take this last opportunity to mention that after 42 years as a real estate attorney, I've. Retired my license to the bar association and I won't be appearing before you as an attorney, which is a great relief, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnum. Okay, uh, we can, if anyone wants to raise their hand on Zoom, that has. Something they like to say, you'll have five minutes. If you can't figure out how to raise your hand, I think there's other means to let us know, there you go, Gregory O'Connor.
Hi, this is Greg O'Connell, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you.
So, um, I work for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife in the Eureka office and, um, wanted to. Thank the city for, uh, pursuing, uh, this ordinance, it's, uh, been a long time coming, I know many folks have been working on this for a couple of decades. And so it's great to see happen. I wanted to just mention a, a couple of topics, um, you know, just general, the Department of Fish and Wildlife support for this ordinance. And, uh, and myself and the staff in our department are here to help as much as we can. It's mentioned that we attended a site visit with Kristen to look at a couple of locations, that was pretty valuable. Also, just wanted to highlight, I think, some of the public meetings that have been held so far, the, um, the scoping meetings. Just the importance of the intrinsic values of the habitats there, uh, within these greenways and gulches. And they kind of, I kind of see them as. Topographic features, I think that's one of the important ways to talk about them, yes, they contain streams, they contain wetlands. But when you look at, uh, digital elevation models or even con, uh, contour lines, you can really see that they're, they're almost canyon-like and topographic features. And they're riparian corridors, uh, so it's, it's good to think about them as those, as those habitat units. Uh, one of the things that we talked with, uh, Kristen about was, um, the suggestion of modifying the ordinance from, um. Use, avoiding the term top of bank, but rather use the term top of slope, uh, I think that that would be, um. Uh, inclusive of these, um, this topographic feature and that the setbacks be starting from there or the edge of riparian habitat. I think there are several locations where there's streets already kind of, um, in place, where, where within those setbacks would be. And those are places like that are great locations where, uh, lesser setbacks would be appropriate. Uh, so those are just a couple of thoughts, uh, we're going to be reviewing this ordinance in a little more detail and providing written comment, uh, prior to your next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom like to speak? All right, I'll bring it back to the commission. You guys have any more questions?
Well, I see that the, the process moving forward is you're taking our comments now and answering questions and then will be presented this in a, a month from now. Basically, um, a final draft of the ordinance.
Yes, I'm going to look into some of your questions and continue to work on the draft mapping and I may report. Back to you guys at your June meeting, um, just on progress and then, um. The thought tentatively is to, uh. Have the, have the hearing at the July meeting.
That sounds good to me, it seems like a good timeline and a, a chance for it to be a, an iterative process. It's such a strong starting point, so thank you so much for all the hard work that you put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you, I do think, um, Mr. Barnum is kind of brought up that importance of finding out how much of this land is developable and what affects, you know. Where we, we find these midlines, so I do look forward to getting some of those answers so we can make better decisions about. Um, you know, just that stress you might put on, on another landowner and, and what they want to do and develop, there's, it's a delicate balance, it seems.
I guess, uh, one thing I was. And a question about was, let's see here. It wasn't clear in the procedure for the setback reduction. That there would be agency consultation in the context of, I, I see it in the. Section where CDFW is referenced, but I guess. section where CDFW is referenced, but I guess I didn't see it in the, the section of the zoning regulations that it references, the 4, 155.408. Wouldn't there be referrals in the context of a discretionary permit ordinarily to a variety of?
Yes, it's city policy to refer, you know, projects out to applicable agencies. We don't, there's no, the zoning code, the new updated zoning code doesn't talk about avoids including what the application procedures, like the specifics of it, because it's just current best practice with zoning ordinances, not to put that in there because it changes all the time. But that would be our policy, would be to refer that out.
I figured, but I, and I agree that it is nice to leave that to a departmental level, more flexible, so you can add and contract. And another question, oh, I wanted to make sure to suggest this. In the section under procedures for GGMA recordation, part L, page eight, the county has this concept of a development plan. And I don't know that it's even codified in our streamside management area ordinance, it might be, but, but I, but the general idea is that it's an exhibit that details the property and identifies constraints or important notes or things that are agreed to, restrictions, constraints of some sort. And it lives at the planning department. And it's referenced in a document filed on title called a notice of development plan. It could be referenced in this document that you guys are anticipating to be recorded. But, but basically it, it's useful for future landowners, but it can be, it'll ultimately just show up on a title report as a line saying a notice of development plan or a setback reduction agreement, you know, there's, but it, when they pull that document, it'll say, go to the planning department to see more specifically what the ramifications of that are. So it, it's nice to have a visual exhibit where you have the identified line where you don't go beyond and the mitigation areas and the, any kind of restrictions on land use, maybe the use of pesticides or herbicides. It can be all put on development plan notes. So it's a good, I think it's a good tool for kind of memorializing all the things that get brokered under the discretionary process or the director level negotiation, I think. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that is helpful. Had it, we hadn't thought through how, what form it would take. So I will look into the county's example for sure.
I can send you some examples of the legal document and the, and what, some samples of what they look like.
Something that bears talking about just a little bit is Kristen, early, early on, you talked about, you know, in the general plan, that there are also being provisions to create trails in open space areas and the greenways and gulches are, are those, those spaces that, that are available to create safe routes to school and other kinds of multi-use trails. And I think that's well and good. I, I guess what comes to my mind ironically is that while the greenways and gulches are, ordinance as proposed, the draft language that we're seeing is going to be much more protectionist. And, and it, and it, it may seem, if, I, I guess I would caution about there being some kind of variance for trails. I would, I would want to see trails go through the same level of, of, of analysis that any other developments in the greenways and gulches that would have to go through. I, I think it sends a message, if the, if the city gives itself a free pass to, to put a multi-use trail that's asphalt in the lower sections of the greenways and gulches, nearest or even on top of the wetlands, that's kind of sends a double message that not, you know, that we get to make our own rules for how, how the city operates. And so I think some level of care needs to be involved in this. And for me, it might even be to, to keep the, the trails issue completely not connected to this, to, to the ordinance, so that it's, so that the trails, when and if they do come, are, are, are subject to an equally rigorous assessment than any other, than what any private property owner wouldn't have to do just for equity and fairness. I may be the only commissioner who feels that way, you know, I'm a trails advocate, but I'm, I worry about giving us a free pass, giving the city a free pass that others don't have to, and others have to go through more difficult hurdles.
Anything else, Commissioners? No. All right, well, I guess we're adjourned until we see you next time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for all the feedback.
Thank you.